Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of July 24th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. And Vice and Councilmember Arias entered at 5:48. Welcome to all of you, and it's so good to see so many of our young summer interns in the audience also. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Roland Banks of Compassion Christian Center to offer the invocation. We're just so grateful for Compassion Christians' involvement in our community gardens and then also in helping us with our Community Violence Program. Really appreciate that. Following the invocation, Kalen Bolden, who is one of our city's high school interns and a recent graduate of Independence High School, she'll lead us in the pledge. She's a high school intern with the city's Public Works Department in the Solid Waste Division. She was ASB president at Independence High for four years. Played varsity basketball, volleyball, and softball. She's a California Scholarship Federation Lifetime Member and shall be attending Louisiana State University in the fall to study psychology and cognitive neuroscience. After college, she plans to return to Bakersfield, and here's my best part, and serve her community as a neurologist. I'm glad you're coming back here, Kalen. And now, would you all please stand?
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for this privilege to be here. Let's just bow our heads and go to the Father in prayer. Father, we just thank and praise you for this day that you have made. We rejoice and we're glad in it. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity to serve our community. We ask that your presence and guidance be with us here tonight, and for the wisdom to rest upon each council member, also all elected and appointed city officials, as they deliberate and make decisions for the betterment of our city. Father, grant them discernment and understanding as they navigate the complexities of governance. Help them to act in integrity and justice. Lord, we pray for unity within our city. Let us come together with the shared vision and purpose, working collaboratively across all divides to foster a community that is compassionate and supportive of all its members. Father, we ask in the name of Jesus your blessing on our city's economic status. May new opportunities for business and enterprise arise that bring prosperity to all of our residents. We pray, Father, for a decrease in unemployment and that all that seek work will find meaningful employment, to be able to take care of their needs and the needs of their families. Father, in the precious name of Jesus, we ask for your protection over each and every neighborhood and community. Grant wisdom and courage to our community leaders, law enforcement officers, and residents as they work together to ensure the safety and security of all. Last but not least, God, we ask that you help us develop strategies and compassionate responses to address the issues that impact all the residents of our city. May we find ways to provide ideal resources and opportunities to support all those in need. May all the residents of Bakersfield hear the sound of something better. In all things, Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance, your love and your justice. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. And as our interpreter announced earlier, we do have Spanish interpretation available. So if you see anyone coming in in a while who might need that, just please direct them to the interpreter. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation, item 4A, proclamation to Scott Tigerson, CEO of Kern Medical, Martha Leon, Executive Director of Kern Medical Foundation, and Rob Purdy, Patient and Program Development Coordinator for the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical, declaring August 2024 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in Bakersfield.
Thank you. Colleagues, we are just so blessed to have the Valley Fever Institute in our community and these fine representatives here. According to data from the California Department of Public Health, 2023 marked the highest number of reported Valley Fever cases ever, with Kern County responsible for the majority. The summer months following wet winters like the one we just experienced are associated with high incidences of Valley Fever. And in the absence of a vaccine or a cure, awareness continues to be our best weapon to reduce the impact to our community. And I'm just so grateful to be able to present the following proclamation. Whereas Valley Fever is a progressive, multi-symptomatic respiratory infection and debilitating disease caused by fungal spores that exist in the soil, and whereas Valley Fever attacks the respiratory system, causing infections that lead to symptoms resembling many common infections, including cough, fever, or fatigue, and whereas the Valley Fever Institute of Kern Medical is committed to increasing education and awareness for the public, patients, and healthcare providers, and whereas it is vital that residents and visitors alike are aware of the existence and symptoms of Valley Fever, so that if an infection is contracted, early treatment may be administered, and whereas the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical also remains dedicated to magnifying this growing epidemic, educating the public on the importance of early diagnosis and meeting the needs for clinical care and research by healthcare professionals. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim August 2024 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in our city and urge all residents to be educated and aware of the threat Valley Fever poses and lend support to finding a cure for this potentially deadly disease. It's my honor to be able to present this to Scott Tigerson. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to again be with you and before your council for Valley Fever Awareness Month. If I may first make a recruitment pitch to the future doctor, Kern Medical needs you. The community needs you. So if there's anything that we can do in the future to assist you in your educational endeavors to become a physician, please get in touch with us. So as Mayor Go shared, Kern County continues to have about a third of all the Valley Fever cases in the Central Valley and across the state. And when you think of our 900-plus thousand people that live here compared to 38 million across the state, and what this potentially devastating disease can wreak upon someone. Unfortunately, it wasn't too long ago when we had a family friend pass away from Valley Fever, and the effects of that are like a cancer patient. When you think of a cancer patient and the treatments that they go through, infusion, and what their end of life may be like, that unfortunately happens. And those are the devastating effects of Valley Fever. Kern Medical has a unique role, and well, takes every hospital and healthcare provider to care for our community. Our role is to be the safety net provider and care for the most vulnerable. It is to be a trauma and specialty center. And then it's also to be a teaching and research institution. And one of that venues in that teaching and research arena is Valley Fever. The Valley Fever Institute started thanks to the diligent work on behalf of legislators and other elected officials to receive the seed money to start that Valley Fever Institute. Until there is a vaccination or a cure, this will remain with us. The mission of the Valley Fever Institute is, of course, to provide care, but also to provide education. And it's unfortunate where we still run into corners of not just our community, but elsewhere in the Central Valley, of folks that may have a respiratory illness and their physician, when it hasn't resolved, hasn't tested, hasn't evaluated that further. You'll see as part of the Valley Fever Institute, both the Kern County Department of Public Health holding press releases and media events in order to make awareness a key vital component of being aware of something that can really affect people that live in our community. With that said, I'd like to have Rob Purdy with the Valley Fever Institute share a few words.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank the City Council and Mayor Go for their years of support of the Valley Fever Institute. So the Valley Fever Institute is unique, is in Kern Medical, unique in the community, and honestly, unique in the world. The Valley Fever Institute is the only patient care center that includes education and awareness in its mission, and it's also the only research center that includes and prioritizes patient perspective and patient outcomes. The Valley Fever Institute continues to lead the awareness and education efforts, conduct research that is focused on patients for better outcomes in our community. And in the absence of a cure, as Mayor Go said, or a vaccine, awareness continues to be our best weapon to fight Valley Fever and to reduce the impact on our community. The Valley Fever Institute wants to encourage members of our community to ask their doctor about a Valley Fever test if they've had a respiratory illness for longer than 10 days, especially if the symptoms include a rash. So rather than go through the symptoms which are similar to cold, flu, and now COVID, I want to encourage people that have had an illness that lasts more than 10 days, especially if they've had a negative COVID or flu test, to ask their doctor about a vaccine, excuse me, a Valley Fever test, especially if those symptoms concur with a rash. And additionally, no test is perfect. There is nothing that works 100% in this world. So testing should be repeated two to four weeks later if the first test was negative and symptoms persist. And I'll share a story. As knowledgeable as I obviously am and experienced unfortunately with dealing with Valley Fever for the last 12 years, my wife had a respiratory illness a few years ago, and she followed this exact same advice with her doctors. She was tested three times over a two-month period for Valley Fever, and thankfully, she did not have it. But that was very, you know, it supported our efforts, and it was very reassuring to know that the doctors were listening and taking her condition seriously. Alternatively, I know a gentleman who was born and raised in a farming community here in Kern County. He had the same situation, and on his third test, he did test positive for Valley Fever and was able to get the care he needed. And this is a gentleman that was born and raised in this community. You will see some Valley Fever Awareness Yard signs like this one right here around town. As a matter of fact, we've brought one out for each member of the City Council and Mayor Go, but not that one. That one's Danielle's. And they are available to members of the community through the kernmedicalfoundation.com. So the Kern Medical Foundation, as well as Kern Medical, are the two organizations that have made and empowered the Valley Fever Institute to impact the community in the way we do. And so I think their efforts cannot be underscored. And although Martha is not speaking, as the Executive Director of our foundation, she is a core to the foundation that is the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical. And we also have another small gift for you. So awareness for Valley Fever. We often have used turquoise ribbons traditionally. This was started in Arizona. So we have turquoise ribbons for you to encourage you to wear throughout the month of August. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A couple of them here.
Thank you all very much. help us raise awareness. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed for the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received three speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Empress Nontzekalelo, followed by Cecilia, followed by Valeria.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Empress Nontzekalelo, and I'm here to commend my City Council Rep. Andre Gonzalez and the City Manager, Christian Clegg, and the employees of the Economic Development for finally taking steps to make sure that the area, long underserved, neglected, we have new streets, newly paved streets, not patched, but paved, and is right in front of my house, my street that I live on in Eureka. And I just want to commend my City Councilperson for standing up for that community and making sure. And also Eric Arias, because I know he began the fight a few years back before the boundaries were changed. And I just want to commend you all for really being sincere and taking interest. And I do want to state that I know it's not an easy job, but we have to take into consideration, when they fight for us, it's because we have been long underserved and neglected. And in order to bring us on par with the rest of the city, they have to fight that hard for funds to be in that area that has been disinvested for so long. I wanted to brave the heat, and boy, it's hot out there. But thank you again, Andre Gonzalez, Christian Clegg, and the city staff from the Economic Development, led by, as far as I know, Jason Cater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Empress. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Empress, for the kind words. I appreciate that. I also want to join you in thanking city staff, particularly Mr. Straklous, Public Works Director, and Kevin Peoples, head of the Streets Division, who really has been instrumental at getting at a lot of our streets that have been overlooked for quite some time. And you're right, we must continue to push for our disadvantaged neighborhoods and making sure that those areas have adequate, not only repaving of our streets, but also our alleys, for whom many rely on as a front entrance to their home, and also improved infrastructure when it comes to walkability and bikeability. So I appreciate you coming out and braving the heat. It's always wonderful to see you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Cecilia, followed by Valeria.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello again. My name is Cecilia Marcial. I am a perinatal nurse in the City of Bakersfield, representing...
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please? Speak a little louder so our interpreter, and maybe just slow down so our interpreter can interpret. Welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. I am a perinatal nurse in the City of Bakersfield, representing only myself. I am part of the thousands of healthcare workers for Palestine who cannot be silent in the face of ongoing US-funded genocide, which you are complicit in. Do you still stand resolutely with the apartheid state when the International Court of Justice has ruled Israel is in violation of international law? Do you support the murder of one child in Gaza every 10 minutes? I am embarrassed. I am embarrassed to be American. I am embarrassed of my country's leadership. I am embarrassed that our tax dollars are funding genocide. I am embarrassed that our politicians do not denounce genocide. I am embarrassed that our politicians receive money from the American Israel Public Affairs Committee, known as APAC. I am embarrassed that your moral compass is so flawed that receiving blood money from genocide is your preferred option. It sickens me that a country that prides itself in promoting freedom and justice has never stopped supporting ethnic cleansing. And no, I will not leave my ancestral lands. But I will leave you with this quote. I must say tonight that a riot is the language of the unheard. And what is it America has failed to hear? It has failed to hear the plight of the Negro poor has worsened over the last 12 or 15 years. It has failed to hear that the promise of freedom and justice has not been met. And it has failed to hear that large segments of white society are more concerned about tranquility and the status quo than about justice and humanity.
Next speaker, please.
Valeria.
Please introduce yourself.
Afternoon. I'm here to talk about the case of Mohammed Barr, and I want to give a fair warning for the disturbingly violent story that it is. This is Mohammed Barr, a 24-year-old man with Down Syndrome. He was nonverbal, often refused to move, and still relied on his family to feed and change him. The family tried their best to hide him in the corner of the living room when Israeli troops raided their neighborhood following heavy airstrikes. The family had already been displaced five times at this point. When the Israeli troops arrived, they unleashed their dogs, which immediately jumped on Mohammed. His mother, Nabila Amid Barr, recalls that the dog first bit his chest and then began to bite and maul his arm, and that Mohammed was screaming and trying to free himself as the blood poured. As I mentioned earlier, Mohammed was nonverbal, but his mother goes on to recall, Mohammed could not speak or say any word, but out of horror, he was screaming at the dogs, sometimes saying "Wala wala," which translate to "hey you," and sometimes "Khalas yah habibi." Enough, my dear. I don't know how he uttered these words. We had never heard him speak before. She pleaded with the soldiers to take the dog off of him. She tried to explain that her son was disabled. When the troops finally did remove the dog, they still kept Mohammed in a separate room from the rest of his family. His mother pleads again, "Let Mohammed come here," to which the Israeli soldier replies, "No, we will treat him." Hours later, she would hear him scream for water. She would ask the troops to bring him some. They said they had a specific type of water for him. The mother could hear her son humming in pain every now and then. The soldiers would open the door, tell him to be quiet before closing it again. A doctor that had arrived with the troops entered the room, and suddenly Nabila could no longer hear Mohammed humming. Later, she asked the soldier, "Where is Mohammed?" They told her, "Mohammed is gone." "Gone where?" she asks. "Mohammed is gone. There is no Mohammed." The family was forced to leave the house, and weeks later, they returned to the ruins. Mohammed was still there, lying on his stomach, and his body was decaying. I want everyone to keep Mohammed's story in mind. When I remind them that Mayor Karen Go has yet to walk back on the fact that she stands as I quote, "resolutely with the state of Israel," and when I remind them that no one on this council has taken it upon themselves to introduce the ceasefire resolution they were given months ago to express solidarity with Palestine. Instead, they installed metal detectors, cameras, and sicced police drones on us when the Palestinians came to express their outrage.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for this portion?
Mayor Go, that was the final speaker for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The Consent Calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearing Item 8A through B or Reports Item 10A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor Go, we've received two speaker cards regarding Consent Calendar Item 7. First speaker will be Sandra Magoza Placencia, and followed by Wendell Wesley Jr.
Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Sandra Magoza Placencia, and I am the Kern Policy Advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, and I'm commenting on 7C2. As the city continues to rezon sites to meet its arena, we urge the City Council to ensure the city's housing sites inventory complies with the Housing Element Law, which includes the city's mandatory duty to offer merely further for housing. HCD recently identified Bakersfield's second Housing Element draft as noncompliance. On page two of the findings, they state, "The element includes Table D21 that identifies the arena by census tract and socioeconomic characteristics, but should also aggregate the arena by area, for example, central and southwest Bakersfield, then evaluate any isolation of the arena by income group, and discuss impacts on existing patterns of socioeconomic characteristics." We uplift this comment to ensure the city identifies which category of the arena the sites will meet, whether that's extremely low-income, low-income, very low-income, moderate, or above moderate. Identifying which category of the arena each site will meet will help the city and the public identify whether they are on track or not to meet the arena during the planning period, and will help the city determine whether there are adequate number of sites to ensure it does not run afoul to the No Net Loss Law under Government Code Section 65863. Additionally, we raise concerns regarding the overconcentration of sites being proposed in southeast, east, and central Bakersfield. While the sites that will be rezoned are spread throughout the city, it is evident that the majority of our four sites are located east of the 99. The overconcentration of these sites in low-resource areas does not abide by AFFH due to these sites being identified as prone to displacement, cost burden, and are racially-ethically concentrated areas of poverty in the housing element. We uplift the city needs to revise its sites inventory to comply with the requirements under Government Code 65883 Subsection A3, and label each site to include the following categories such as their location, arena income category, zoning designation, density, acreage, and APN. The city must ensure their sites inventory abides by AFFH and Housing Element Law. Thank you, and we hope to continue working with you.
Ms. Placencia, you're doing an amazing job in keeping time. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Wendell Wesley Jr. Thank you, Mayor Go, City Council, city staff. This is about 7D4 Purchase of Tax Default Real Property Resolution of Bakersfield City Council authorizing the city manager to designate the purchase to tax-deferred real properties not exceeding $800,000. This is a very good thing that you guys want to do here. My only concern is that we really need you to work with us. Usually, when cities, states, counties, when they start purchasing homes, buying homes, as we all know, most of these homes right now are way overpriced for anyone in this community. Thanks to the Real Estate Board and the flipping of housing, we've created a mess, and now we're spending way too much money on shelter beds because people have been displaced, because housing is now not affordable. So I urge you to realize that for every $2 that we spend on shelter beds, you're only going to spend $1 to keep people housed. going to spend $1 to keep people housed. And to make matters even better, it would be in everybody's best interest if the city works with the general public here to establish our own community land trust so that these homes once purchased could be turned into housing that is truly affordable based on people's net and the cost of utilities and such other things. So people are not just surviving, people have an opportunity to live and improve the quality of life for generations to come. So Bakersfield itself will be self-sustainable in all areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Madam Clerk, do we have any others in this category?
Mayor Go, that was our final public speaker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Does any member of the council wish to pull an item from the consent calendar or recuse themselves from an item? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on with approval. I do want to make a comment, though, if I can. I apologize. We have an item on the agenda tonight regarding the purchase of a system that provides enhanced monitoring with the Bakersfield Police Department. I'd like to make a referral tonight that we work on a policy that outlines the parameters of the use of that FLOC system, and if we can, send that to safe and healthy neighborhoods. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor Go, before we move on with the vote, if I may interrupt. Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum has been provided for Item 7C2 Transmitting Correspondence. An additional staff memorandum has been provided for Item 7E6, correcting the term of the agreement to 2025.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Council members Smith and Gray absent.
Thank you, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 8A and 8B for approval.
Yeah, you're going to have to announce it, though. It's now time for Consent Calendar Hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of this meeting. I believe that Councilmember Freeman is recusing himself, and do you have-
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman will abstain from Items 8A and 8B from the Consent Calendar Public Hearings.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, did Councilmember Freeman indicate the reason on the slip?
Thank you, Ms. Gennaro. I was trying to discern that. I believe he indicates that a person or entity involved in the proposed action is a source of income or gifts to Mr. Freeman.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. So at this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the Consent Calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony. Only remove the item from the Consent Calendar Hearings. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Calendar Hearings? At this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 8A through B is closed. Vice Mayor?
Move to approve Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A and 8B.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman abstaining and Councilmembers Smith and Gray absent.
Thank you, next item, please.
Reports Item 10A, American Rescue Plan Act Updated Framework Including Updated Appropriations in Applicable Departmental Budgets. A staff memorandum has been provided regarding this item, correcting some Scrivener's errors. An additional staff memorandum has been provided Transmitting Correspondence.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We are required to do regular updates for the federal government related to ARPA funding, and this cycle, this report is in response to that cycle for regular reporting, but also want to take an opportunity as we are now a little less than six months away from our obligation to fully either encumber, spend, or obligate our ARPA funding. In the administrative report that was provided to the city council, we outlined several updates to the ARPA framework. The ARPA framework, again, this is, you know, $94 million. We didn't necessarily put a table together that shows every portion or line item within our ARPA budget, but we provided updates to a couple of changes. Those changes are in three principal categories. First, the same ARPA adjustments that were approved in the budget process are just memorialized here, where we took funding to fund the Open Door Network Shelter Construction Project. We also funded Jastro Park Improvements, and then also had some additional dollars for street paving and street lighting in disadvantaged neighborhoods. Again, those were all actions as part of the city council budget adoption. There were also two other funding allocations where RFPs or grant solicitations, we ended up having more quality responses than we had anticipated, and so just within the same overall funding buckets, we're able to allocate some funds. In the example of tourism, for one example, we're able to spend additional of the tourism dollars in support of the capital project solicitation for small venues in the tourism and hospitality sector. We added a little bit of funds to round out those RFP responses, and similarly with our facade improvement grants, there was a slight increase there. Also, we memorialized, I failed to mention on the budget allocation, we memorialized in our report the fact that council prior at mid-year had allocated $500,000 towards the Business Security Grant Program that was prior in our Violence Prevention Bucket. The third and final update to the ARPA framework is that we did identify some savings, and this was a part of the course of business around ARPA, but also to be responsive to the referral related to the potential for funding for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and that's why you'll see that starting slide on the screen. We identified from a particular project $1.2 million that is not going to be fully expended in our Water Conservation Turf Replacement Program. And so this is $1.2 million in savings that could be allocated to another, you know, priority of the council. Again, that's a council priority, council action, but in response to, again, the recent referral, staff feels like that this funding allocation is, you know, an appropriate consideration to be responsive to that referral and council discussion on funding that could support the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Before opening up to questions and discussion, I just want to, I have just two quick slides to highlight both the potential projects, but also some of the funding that is already allocated or pending for programming, to make sure that that context is fully understood. So if Clerk could advance one slide. This first slide is actually just a summary of the types of funding that's already in place. This is existing funding or pending programs. Related to rental assistance, it's important to note, in addition to the significant federal treasury monies that were allocated through the city and the county during the pandemic, that over the last four years, there's been $1.5 million in HAP funding from the state that's been allocated towards rental assistance that has gone out from the homeless collaborative, but through funding approved by the city. We've also done the $700,000 in rental assistance from CDBG monies that council authorized in this last year. On top of that, we had also identified the $250,000 for rental deposit assistance. We're still working on the best way to get those monies out the door, but that was also council direction from prior action. And then in this coming year, we have $1 million in home funds that we're going to be allocating for rental assistance as well. So there are significant rental assistance funds across multiple funding sources. Again, we've named some of these programs, but we have now, you know, providing you those dollar figures. Our Fair Housing Contract that we do annually is $100,000 investment. We have $170,000 in CDBG Home Access Improvements. Home weatherization, we've got $1 million in ARPA going towards assisting with improvements in our disadvantaged neighborhoods. We have several million dollars going towards installing solar panels, as well as actually additional weatherization programs through our $22 million in TCC grant funding. And we are expecting expanding those programs with additional grant funding. And then, as recently discussed, of course, we've approved the pilot program for eviction prevention to the tune of $350,000. And then, these dollar amounts on homebuyer assistance vary year to year, but we are doing homebuyer assistance, as well as the Community Land Trust is seeing significant investments that will go towards both additional units, as well as the opportunity for homebuyer assistance and down payment assistance for properties within the established land trust. So the good news is, again, we have a strong foundation that's been set to address, you know, priority issues and get at neighborhood stabilization. So I think that the question that is going to be before us in coming months is, what are the additional neighborhood stabilization programs? We gave a early look at some of those programs in our presentation along with the budget a month ago. We've been hard at work over the last four weeks. We have advanced our research around potential projects. I have to share with council, though, we don't have a fully developed work plan. We need to do some additional analysis, we need to do some additional outreach. But if Clerk could advance the slide, these are just some early looks at, we're starting to see a couple of different buckets where there's larger projects that we think will be more significant funding, and smaller projects that could be done with smaller amounts. And based on feedback, both from staff who've been doing this homework and research, and best practices, and community feedback, is that there are significant concerns with habitability. That is, the ability to offer grants, to do home repairs, to fix issues within homes so that we don't displace tenants that are experiencing those habitability issues. We need to be careful about this because we want to reinforce good behavior and not reward bad behavior, frankly. But we also don't want this to be another instance where with some of our more, potentially more code complaints, as residents become more aware of their tenants' rights through our workshops, but also some proactive code enforcement. You'll see that second bullet point, that we expect we're going to find those habitability issues, and that could just mean more displacements, more closed units. And that's not the intent, we believe, of this program or this council, and so we want to find ways that benefit the habitability for those tenants. And if we can do good vetting and essentially case management in those instances, we think those rehabilitation grants would go a long way. We've also been looking at some of the recommendations out of the Homeless Action Plan, and there, again, there's a voluntary rental registry recommendation using a particular tool called PADmission that we think it makes sense to support, but then also the potential of a pilot program for limited required registry of certain high-risk residential locations, and then the potential for relocation assistance, again, for those that may be displaced as we continue to try and pursue these stabilization programs. We need to do, again, a little more homework to flesh out what those all precisely look at and the dollar amounts that we would recommend, but we do feel like this $1.2 million in savings is a very reasonable allocation that could get at these large projects and then still have the funding, as discussed and referred at the last conversation on this topic, to add some legal advice for landlords to complement that that's going to be available to tenants, and then to do some additional community outreach for housing navigators to help walk folks through the different issues and challenges beyond those efforts that are going to be available through the eviction prevention program. This is more about having navigators that are in the community aware of the same information that's coming out of those type of workshops that will be offered by GBLA. And then lastly, trying some pilots of what residential facade improvement grants could look like. Of course, we've tried that with commercial, and in EOAs, we've seen good results there. There are some examples in other cities where they do that in residential areas. Typically, it's focused to narrow geographies to see, you know, block by block synergies in those type of improvements, but we think that there could be good stabilization in key geographies with a potential pilot there as well. Again, this is not set in stone, council's not voting on this tonight, but this is just a preview of the types of programs that will take this ARPA savings, if directed by council, to identify the projects within that funding to pursue based on this analysis we've done thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We'll now go to the public for comment. There will be a two-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit for the entire report item. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Mayor Go, we've received two requests to speak, one from Sandra Melgoza Placencia, and one from Wendell Wesley.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello again, Sandra Melgoza Placencia, and I am the current policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments, and thank you, Mr. Clegg, for showing us, you know, the proposed programs and for meeting with us earlier this month as well. I did want to push back on the recommendation for $100,000 for landlord legal assistance. Wanted to reiterate the main data that we were pushing for when we were talking about the APP program, which is over 70% of landlords have access to legal representation in court when less than 2% of tenants do, right? I think also at the budget adoption, we heard from Executive Director of GBLA, Valentin, that, you know, evictions can cost a family up to $10,000 to $20,000, which is incredibly expensive and a huge financial burden. I am here to kindly request that the city, instead of using that funding for landlord legal assistance, you add it on to the pilot program for the eviction prevention program. We know that, you know, the program is starting next week, right? And we are very excited to hear about that, but we reiterate that $350,000 is not enough to meet the need, and I do believe that the data will show that in the mid-year. Additionally, we did submit a letter asking for rental assistance, more funding for rental assistance, a relocation assistance for families who are going through habitability issues- assistance, a relocation assistance for families who are going through habitability issues. And we are also asking for a rental registry. And we would love to continue working with the city and community to identify how that would look like in the future. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Placencia. Next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley, Jr.
Again, like Sandra said, thank you all very much. I'm really enjoying working with Christian Craig and the other members and employees in the city. And I really do believe that we will be able to make really headway and see some good numbers in the future of reducing homelessness. And the best way to do that is to really look at sustainability. In order to do that, we need affordable housing. In order to do that, we need programs like this ARPA program, like giving $100,000 to landlords that really don't need any assistance in that area. And for the very few that do, I'm sure they can find affordable legal assistance, because we do have legal aid services here in Kern County that they can use. So we don't have to throw good money after bad. The registry is a really good program that the city needs right now, because we need to identify every landlord that's out there, especially the corporate ones, because a lot of landlords currently are hiding how many different properties they have, just to qualify for programs like this that they really don't need. And because they're corporate and they're Wall Street-backed, they have way too much power than what is necessary. They run a lot of scare tactics. I was just recently learned of someone where their circuit breaker was shut off as an intimidation practice. So this is really horrible. We need to identify landlords that are doing these things, because this is not Bakersfield. We don't want landlords like that. There's good landlords here, and that's what Bakersfield's about, having good landlords, not bad landlords. Along with this registry program, there needs to be fines when landlords are out of bounds or wrongly intimidating and pushing people out into the streets. And those fines don't need to go to the state of California. They need to go to a program that's going to turn back around and be able to help and serve the community. This is the best path forward, so that people that are looking into having rental properties...
Mr. Wesley, you've exceeded your time. Would you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay, so that, let people know that if they're going to come to Kern County or Bakersfield, that this is just not an opportunity to get wealth off the backs of hard-working people, and their mortgage isn't even paid for. They should be good owners and have their mortgage paid for already.
And for the record, would you just introduce yourself, please?
Wendell Wesley, Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. Number one is, I think it would serve the city well if, at some point, we were able to publish a report on all of the wonderful projects that we were able to fund as a result of these one-time ARPA dollars. I mean, this is a pretty historic investment in our community. And as I look at the long list of different buckets, I'm very proud to say, many of us in the council have been very involved in many of these priority areas, particularly in the qualified census tracts. And I would love us to produce that report so that we can demonstrate exactly how we've utilized these precious dollars. And I think that'll serve all of us really well. I want to jump right into some specifics, if I can. Regarding the home weatherization million-dollar allocation, what is the status of that funding line item? Have we expended those dollars?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. They are not fully expended. We actually have two different vendors who are working that project. We split it into two different providers and two contracts. One has largely expended their funding. The other is still working their way through, but we've been applying significant reminders of the need to move quickly to expend funds, although they are encumbered and they will have beyond December 2024 to spend down those funds. But we are reminding them of the need and the obligation to move forward. So I would think we're probably 60% expended, and so there still are some opportunities, but we also have many applications in queue.
So when you say encumbered, they're encumbered from our perspective, but those dollars are still with the agencies?
Correct.
And they have a list of applicants to utilize those dollars. They just haven't gone through it yet.
Correct.
Okay. I would want us to establish some sort of deadline as to when we were going to actually apply those dollars. And then, any unexpended dollars by our deadline that we established, claw those back so that we can apply them to some of these other programs. One of the programs I'm really interested in is this home habitability project. I think the conversation that I had with you recently, from what I understood, there was a significant number of cases that have been referred to GBLA that had to do with habitability. What was that, around 80%?
Correct.
And so, I mean, this sort of tracks with some of the conversations I've had with my constituents. In fact, Ms. Empress and I had a conversation just last week about the need for us to invest in some of these homes in our qualified census tracts to make those significant repairs. Many of our residents have floors that have holes in them, they have roofs that have holes in them and are leaking, and some of the conditions are pretty substantial and concerning. And so I would like us to see about utilizing some of those dollars, whatever weatherization dollars we have remaining, and then whatever buckets we might have, so that we can make that a priority as we move forward, because that is a significant need. And Ms. Empress, thank you so much for lifting that up to me in our conversation last week in your living room. Lots of good stuff. Like I said, one of the other areas I'm really interested in is this bucket, community development in qualified census tracts. I believe we have identified some additional dollars under that track, under that bucket, to the tune of $2 million or so?
Yeah, we have just less than $2 million, that's 1.9 and change, but roughly $2 million in what we've been calling disadvantaged neighborhood projects.
Yeah, and so as I've been communicating with lots of different stakeholders in many of our qualified census tracts, in our disadvantaged neighborhoods, it's been clear to me that, while we have addressed a lot of issues, still some remain. And one of those issues is related to some of our agencies that are providing really deep and meaningful work around youth engagement and youth development. And I know in months past, we've talked about violence prevention and youth violence prevention work, and how that has been a priority. And I want to offer that this might be a really strategic way for us to invest these dollars that will have benefits far beyond the next year and two, but perhaps the next generation, and that we really target some of these agencies, these nonprofits that are working, again, in these disadvantaged neighborhoods. I'll give you a few examples. The Bakersfield Police Activities League has been in southeast Bakersfield for decades. They have significant capital needs. They have a lot of deferred maintenance with their air conditioning system, to their sprinkler system on their property. And as a result, they've had to sort of contract some of the programming for the youth within that neighborhood. The Boys and Girls Club has purchased a property just across the way from their property on Nile Street, again, a disadvantaged neighborhood in East Bakersfield, part of our Nile's Monterey Prosperity neighborhood. They are looking at trying to build a pretty innovative entrepreneurship program within East Bakersfield for the young people there. They could possibly utilize some of these dollars to help invest and get them to the next phase of their project. Groups like Wendell Davis Foundation are currently looking for a location so that they can provide the services that are absolutely essential for many of the boys and men of color within Bakersfield. Councilmember Arias has pointed out in the past, and rightfully so, the need for the city to support the Greenfield Walking Group, which has been a wonderful partner with the city of Bakersfield for well over a decade, and who desperately need a facility, an actual place that they can call home. And so what I'd like to propose tonight is that we develop a one-time capital grant fund, grant application for youth development, for nonprofits that are focused on youth development, and who want to pursue a capital project to enhance their facilities. So I want to make that referral tonight, that we start working on that and bring that back as a way to utilize the remainder of these community development funds in qualified census tracts.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to go a little bit off-script and just echo some of the same sentiments that the Vice Mayor has just pointed out. I just want to lift up the work of, well, really, all of the facilities that my colleague described, but specifically the Greenfield Walking Group and some of the work that they've I'm convinced that we wouldn't be pursuing a complete transformation of Monitor Street without their advocacy efforts. You know, we wouldn't have installed some of the traffic slowing measures along Hosking, for instance. We've done some continued investments through CDBG dollars and other funding sources to make improvements to local residential streets surrounding specifically South High School. And so I just want to lift them up. I'm not sure that they're in the room, but I know that they're probably engaged and are probably going to watch at some point later this week, because their advocacy is relentless, and I couldn't agree more. I think that this is such a transformative opportunity for us to invest in our local youth centers and really double down our efforts to support them in a pretty big way, and ensure that they're not only available to families and children currently, but to ensure that they're around for decades to come to ensure their sustainability. So I think that that's an incredible plan. To go back to the initial conversation and my referral, I just want to thank Sandra and the entire advocacy team for all of your continued efforts. I think it's so important to not lose sight of the conversation, as mentioned. One of the reasons we're having this conversation is because of the need for ongoing investments for the eviction protection program. We know and acknowledge the fact that there were significant challenges with finding the right provider, and also making sure that there was also enough funding for us to keep families housed. It was said tonight that it is far cheaper for us to make an investment to ensure that somebody doesn't fall into homelessness than it is to, on the back end, provide that emergency solution to those families. And that is absolutely the truth. And so I'm just really grateful for the continued advocacy, day in and day out, for us to see the light on this issue and continue to make those smart and strategic and humane investments. So on that note, I just want to give an opportunity for staff to help clarify. It's very clear that the eviction protection program did not make the list, but want to provide an opportunity for us to tell the public why that is and what the plan is moving forward for continued funding.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Arias, Mayor and Council. I would just note first that the title of the slide was very intentional, potential additional programs. And so eviction protection or prevention program is one of our existing programs. I think, again, we need to go and do some more homework and analysis to really identify dollar amounts for each of the potential programs that we think make the most sense, collect more data. And so as we identify, or not identify, as we review the data that comes from this pilot program for the eviction prevention, it could easily be the case that they'll come back and say, we were able to serve this many clients and have prevented people from being unhoused, and here's the waitlist of additional folks, and if we had the additional capacity, we'd be able to serve this additional number of individuals. To me, that is included in the considerations for where additional dollars could go.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for that correction. That is absolutely the truth. And I'm looking forward to seeing the data come back. I think I have great confidence that the Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance, through this funding source and many others that they receive, and with their staff, that they're going to be able to bring back that data. And it is my hope that this council will continue to make those investments year after year. I, too, am also very interested in the habitability grant program. Pretty surprised myself to know that 80% of the calls going through GBLA are related to the habitability of those units, related to molds, mildew, challenges with infrastructure, roof and flooring. So very excited to see that the city is interested in supporting that, either by contract or internally. Also really appreciate the idea of providing additional relocation assistance. And I do want to lift up that the eviction protection program also will hopefully support that effort, because by law in the state of California, in certain instances where just cause or enough notice is not provided to the tenant, it's actually required by state law that those landlords provide at least some relocation assistance. And so I see that an additional fund set aside, working hand-in-hand with the EPP program. And so, yeah, just want to tip my cap off to Jenny and the team. I know it was a quick turnaround. My last question is, what's the timeline moving forward on some of this analysis? And when can the council and the community expect to put these ideas to work?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I would put it into two phases. One, some of these programs that we, again, feel like are probably going to have the biggest impact, we'd actually like the ability to come back to council and say, we're recommending this amount of that sort of set-aside bucket to pursue this program in the next, I would say, two months. I wouldn't anticipate probably until October coming back to say, hey, we think these are all the ways to spend these potential funds. And some of that is, I give this October timeframe as well, because there's the possibility, as we get closer to December, there might be a few other ARPA buckets that just aren't going to get fully expended. And those will be opportunities for council to determine, again, how do we allocate those funds? I think some of those funds, again, we've identified specific categories and buckets, and for the most part, we've tried to keep things within those buckets. And there may actually be additional staff reimbursements that are eligible between now and then, but we'll have one more checkpoint in October before December to say, hey, this is kind of our last time to shift funds to other projects before it needs to be fully encumbered and fully committed. And so we'll come back in October with an update for council more broadly on the set-aside and the projects. But there are some of these, we think, high-impact, large projects that are on that list that we'd like to flesh out in the next couple of months and may bring those back before that October update.
Fantastic. And I'll just take a quick moment to say thank you for your continued leadership. I know we talked for a couple minutes just yesterday about the significant investments that this city council and with your leadership and staff have invested in addressing the root causes of some of the greatest challenges in our community, anything from investments in our local library systems that are producing benefits already, even within just the past couple of months, to investments in park rangers who are there to protect our assets in our local parks, to making sure that we're keeping families housed. So I just want to give kudos to this council, give kudos to you, Christian, and look forward to seeing this come back in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Joining my colleagues to also uplift the creative and more innovative uses of our ARPA dollars. You know, ARPA money came down as what felt like a once-in-a-lifetime allocation from our federal government in the name of being an economic stimulus for the cause of public health. And so much can be encompassed within public... And so much can be encompassed within public health. All of the buckets within our different social determinants of health and some of the more, I think even the larger, but also the smaller projects mentioned, touch upon infrastructure beyond just a building that really allows for us to make investments with dollars that may become once in a lifetime and kind of are those projects, programs that are urgent needs, that are dire needs. But, you know, we have the restrictions of being able to afford it as, as a city governance. So it's, one, a miracle to have ARPA dollars to work with. And as we're on the tail end of it, I just want to also join Councilmember Arias in supporting Vice Mayor Gonzalez's referral in finding ways in which we create support for youth programming and centers that have long served the community and, and building that infrastructure and taking that initiative as, as a city council, as, as the city of Bakersfield and investing in our youth and that hitting on exactly what the purpose of these dollars really was in, in making sure that public health goes beyond just the medical health of someone. It is having a safe space like PALS, the examples that you've mentioned as well, Vice Mayor, or different organizations that serve as a refuge and are, have created different pipelines of leadership. You know, those, those are the ones, those are the organizations and places and spaces that are keeping our youth healthy today. So wanted to just join them in echoing my support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Move the approval of the updated expenditure framework along with the related appropriation.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir abstaining and Councilmembers Smith and Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items tonight to make referrals on. Number one is, I received an email from a constituent who's very concerned about real road and the pedestrian and bicycle safety of that roadway, specifically between California and Stockdale. And so she was requesting some analysis on some traffic calming and perhaps enhanced street lighting in the area and making that referral on her behalf today. Number two, as we continue to expand both Brundage Lane Navigation Center, and there's conversations about some other expansion work in some of these service provider sites that are serving our unhoused population, I'd like the city council to adopt a good neighbor policy that pertains to the area surrounding some of these sensitive uses. And so if we can begin working on a good neighbor policy similar to what we have in place for Brundage Lane, I think that would help benefit the surrounding neighborhoods. And that would include areas around St. Vincent de Paul, the Mission at Kern County, open door network, and even some of these new permanent supportive housing projects that are coming online. Number three, I had a wonderful presentation at the Budget and Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting regarding our entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship grant program. And it was just inspiring colleagues to see and witness all of the wonderful things that some of our local small business owners are doing with just a real modest investment from the city. And I'd like us to continue to fund that program. And so I'm making a referral tonight, as I promised on Monday, that I would. I'm making a referral tonight that we direct staff to look at ways in which we can continue to support that program in future years. And I know, Christian, you indicated that you had some ideas on how to fund that program. I think it's a worthwhile investment. And number four, it was announced a few weeks ago that the Crystal Palace is for sale. Crystal Palace is a historic site for many of us in the community. It is a tourist attraction. It draws people in from all around the world. And I think it's something that, that is really important for the city to ensure that the new buyer, the new owner, the next owner, really can sustain the same spirit and operation that makes it so special. And so what I'd like us to do, because I've received many, many calls from people asking perhaps that the city purchase the property or look at other alternatives, but what I think is probably the best option is for us to work with the current owners and see what, what sort of incentives we might be able to provide, the, a, a potential new buyer with some promises, with some conditions that they sustain operations with the same spirit, that same Bakersfield sound spirit that makes that facility, again, so special. So I'd like us to work on that. Perhaps we can talk about that in budget, finance, and economic development as well. And following tonight, colleagues, it brings me a lot of sadness to share with you that one of my constituents and a really important community stakeholder in downtown Bakersfield has passed away. Mr. Kenny Reed, the owner of Guthrie's Alley Cat, passed away this week. He was the original Mr. Downtown, and he contributed so much to our community for, for many years. And for that, I, along with many of the War II residents, are very grateful for his service. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak, so we stand adjourned at 7:03. Young people, thank you so much for being here. I'll be back with you in about five minutes, and then we'll have our meeting.